Alright, so I will call this meeting to order at 30:00. And you do have a floor in person, so we will take those. I think that we'll start off by introducing ourselves, there's some faces here who maybe could be able to see who they are.
Hi, I'm Katie Chappella, I'm the Treasurer of the Board. Katie Nelson-Hodges, Principal and Superintendent. Sinova Higoy. What am I?
You're a trustee of some sort.
A transitioning trustee, yes. How is that? I need some more, right?
It sounds distinguished.
Oh, yes.
I'm a papered egg advice here.
Here, Joe Wilson, and I'm the Secretary of the Board.
I'm Dave Rupelfil, I'm a teacher here, I teach U N A S.
I'm Michael Mazza, the Dad of a Student, and Director of Community Day.
I'm Katie Thompson, I'm a board trustee.
Charlie Bronson, a parent.
Welcome, Char. Alright, so the first order of business tonight is I am going to, in a minute, make a motion to appoint Sinova Higoy as our second trustee emeritus to the [inaudible].
That's really distinguished.
You're drawing that big pension.
Check's in the mail.
So I'm going to let Tina introduce this, and then I will make the motion.
Sinova has been, Sinova, as we know her fondly, Dr. Higoy, as we know her formally, has been, is one of our founding trustees, and has been with the board since the very beginnings of New Roots Charter School. Sinova's long history as an educator, beginning with K-12 education and special education. She then moved into teaching at the college level, teaching those who would educate, special education students. She then went on to found a series of three centers within the, is it North Carolina or South Carolina?
Georgia.
Georgia. Down south, somewhere down south, below the Mason Dixon line.
More south than the Carolinas.
Yes. Three centers that supported students within that university system in making the transition successfully to college. So throughout this whole journey of developing New Roots Charter School, I personally, and we as a board, and as a school community, want Sinova's expertise and support and guidance as both a mentor and consultant, as well as a member of the Personnel Committee, as well as for a very long stint, until Joe took over, the Secretary to the Board.
It shows her wisdom, because she was able to shuffle a lot.
Sometimes you get wiser when you get older. I give you all hope.
So Sinova is a, it's such a tremendous asset to this school, and I'm so grateful that you're interested in continuing to support and be involved as an emeritus trustee, as we've seen with Dr. Richardson as well, that's a really valuable role that we can really focus in on some projects that we'd like to take on as we move forward.
And I would like to move that we appoint Sinova Higoy as trustee emeritus.
The second?
The seconded by both Katie and Peter simultaneously.
Without a buzzer.
And I'd just like to thank Sinova for her quiet, powerful voice through all these years, through all the time, it's been very calm and present, through this whole full-time life. We need that. Lots of wisdom to come along with that, so.
Thank you, it's my pleasure to serve on this board.
It was a pleasure to work with Sinova during the run-up to teachers' unionization, and they called for some easily scheduled meetings with members of the trustees. Sinova stepped forward and enjoyed her, that was a good experience, and it was enjoyable to work with her and to get to know the faculty at that time.
It's good that I'm just here on this board.
Alright, so with that, all those in favor of appointing Sinova as trustee emeritus? Joe, that is unanimous.
Where's that door?
Alright, with this, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Alright, so the superintendent's report, we'll start off with actually an anticipated discussion about our reporting timeline for our monitoring plan. So we have been on point and on time in submitting all of the reports that have been requested or made part of our probationary plan to date, the most recent being our quarter two financial statements, which report on the second quarter, up through the second quarter, ending December 31st. The way that the, and we're poised now to submit the next round of reports on next Monday, which would be the enrollment report, the February budget to actuals, and the documentation of board meetings during this February.
What is that, what date?
That is Monday the 2nd, so these are scheduled to be submitted on the first business day of the month. So one of the challenges that we're running into is, a couple of challenges. One is that by having the deadline for submission due so close to the end of the month, there isn't an opportunity for full board review and discussion prior to the submission. And then the second challenge is just in terms of financial statements. Welcome, Mr. Bill.
Proceed, the Secretary.
And then the second is just that, you know, it's very unconventional, and Katie can speak more to this, but it's not, it's very unconventional to submit a financial report prior to reconciling bank accounts and having an opportunity to, you know, review the quickbooks documentation of the other previous month. So there's been some conversation with trustees about this, and so I'd just like to open that up as a discussion, for consideration by the board, how you all want to manage this reporting process to make sure that there's good communication leading up to these reports.
So, go ahead.
I was gonna start and say that what Tina just said about the financial reporting is absolutely true. So the month ends Friday at 5:00, and reports are due Monday at 5:00. Report bank statements start in before any real, I mean, you can do mid-month analysis and stuff, and in a perfect world, everything that was gonna be a surprise would happen before the 25th, so they had time to address it, but I don't live in a perfect world, I don't know what to ask. So my initial thought process was to send an email request to the financial people at CSI and ask them for a week, because yes, bank statements are not necessarily available until after the month end, obviously, but we don't have to wait for it to come in the mail, which would be somewhere around the time, you can go online and pull it. You know, but that allows you to get the mail looking in on Friday, process so that all your invoices are in the system, because we are on an accrual basis, not a cash payment. Accrual being you recognize your revenues when they're earned, you recognize your expenses when they're incurred. So if I order something on the 25th from a vendor, and they send the invoice in the mail, and I get it on the 3rd, it's really a February expense, but I can't put it into the system until I get it, so my number's automatically on the 2nd of August. So it would give us some chance to have more accurate numbers, more fully vetted numbers reviewed to see if there are things that show up on the bank statement that we didn't expect, that we can run down, that we can process, that we can report properly. The caveat with that is that this was not a Charter School Institute thing, but I believe it was a State University thing, or the probation.
State University of New York.
So SUNY is, the Charter Schools Institute is managing it. So I'm not sure if Charter Schools Institute would have to go back to the SUNY board to get permission for us to have an extra week to do things, work, that was their debt. They set it up to manage the process this way. But I don't know how anybody else found it, so I was originally gonna send an email to Barb on Monday, and I thought we'll be at a meeting on Tuesday and we discuss it before I go send it out, just random, I'm a calendar, this doesn't make sense. This is from the board, this is difficult at best, and, you know, January numbers have probably changed from January 31st issue the report on February 3rd. The numbers have probably changed just because invoices come in after that.
Yes.
That makes sense to me, if it's actually enough time. We've demonstrated, it appears to me, good faith and the ability to generate, to meet their deadlines. On the other hand, a semi-accurate report seems not to meet any of its purposes, particularly SUNY, who wants to know that we're diligent, one, but two, also have real numbers that were important, that match what their criteria are. The other thing for me, I think it fits in here, is that right now, as a board member, I get a cryptic assurance that we're going to beat the deadline, and a cryptic assurance that the numbers fit. But as you outlined, one, they are in flux still, and two, I'm not getting anything really of substance to look at. So I can't do my due diligence, which is another requirement that we do, and they follow this in essence for not doing our due diligence. So all these things seem to me, at least, add up to a reasonable request.
I agree, and, you know, I am doing the due diligence over the weekend, when, you know, like January 31st was Friday, reports were due on the 3rd. I spent the weekend reviewing reports to make sure that they were accurate, and getting data and stuff like that. But still, it doesn't, it says the treasurer looked at it, it doesn't say the whole board was able to dive in or get explanations or a description from me.
Frankly, that's an unreasonable burden.
Well, it's unfortunate, why does almost nobody ever want to be a treasurer for an organization? But I agree with you, five days might not be, you know, 10 days would be perfect, actually. But, you know, I was hesitant to ask for 10, I figured I could ask for five, or maybe I asked for 10, I guess. I don't know. But, you know, the numbers, we're sending them are accurate as of that time. So any invoices we have that have been processed, they're in there, but if something comes after it, automatically takes numbers that were accurate as of the point of time and makes them less than accurate, or obsolete, if you will.
So I guess there's kind of two questions. One is, well, are we gonna ask? If you are, then I think that, I think it's probably a good idea, but we'll let the board decide. What is, what date to ask for? You know, do you want to ask for the 5th, the 5th working day, the 10th, whatever? And then the second thing is, should the ask just come from a phone call or an email from Katie? Should we pass a resolution asking for this, so that the ask is coming from the whole board? I don't know the answer to any of these questions, but I think that that's kind of the question that we should answer tonight. So, go ahead.
So, what's the questions to ask to them? And these are my two cents. Yes, we should ask, we should ask for them, so we have a place to compromise backwards. I don't wanna compromise, I don't wanna do five and compromise three or something. And 10 seems like it gives us the time that we need, 10 days. And I think the board needs to ask, versus just the treasurer. And so I think there's reason that I don't want them coming back, asking a question about, well, my, you know, okay, you feel this way because you're [inaudible]. You know, why, how does the board feel, can we hear from the board? So since we're here, I'd rather move all those things tonight.
So how about, so there's basically two reasons here. So reason number one is the information that Katie said at the top, that we can't give accurate monthly numbers that close to the end of the bank closing, because it's still [inaudible]. Secondly, that automatically leaves the board no chance to review it before it's submitted. So I would suggest that in this resolution, that we state both of these two reasons, that the board wants time to look at it, and standard accounting practices would suggest that we need to tell, say, the 10th to actually have solid numbers. So if we, if we say that if we ask for the 10th, that means then it's to be done by, say, the 7th or something, so that the board has a couple of days to review it, at least. Even if it's not a board meeting, at least we can look at it before it's [inaudible]. Don't that sound reasonable? So I'm just, I'm gonna make the motion then. So I move that the board pass a resolution asking the Charter Schools Institute to change our reporting dates to the 10th of the month, for the two reasons that we just stated. And the actual wording of the financial reason will come from Katie with her accountant's speech. And wording of the second reason is that the board needs time to review these before they're submitted to the Charter Schools Institute.
Because that was a specific response from Barb on there, [inaudible], that she wanted the board to be able to review the financials before they went out. So, come on, what's your opinion?
Could you share the responsibility?
Thank you. It's late. Yes, exactly. And I appreciate everybody looking the meeting leads, so that I can, you know, meetings that I have to be at.
Any other discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor?
I'm second.
Second, second in fact, Katie, all those in favor? It's unanimous, okay? So Joe and Katie will work on the wording of that, and then it'll go on to the Charter Schools Institute. Sound good? Thank you, everybody.
Alright, so just one more report, a report from me. So on Friday, I'll be leaving for Portland to participate in the Green School National Network's Catalyst Network Research and Documentation Symposium. And so as I, as some of you know, this is a foundation-funded research and documentation symposium that's trying to capture the good work that's been done in the green schools movement over the past decade or so. New Roots is one of 10 schools, and there are also 10 districts that are considered national leaders in this movement. And we've been invited to submit one white paper, which will become probably both an article, you know, a research article, as well as a, maybe a chapter in a book, about green schools and whole school sustainability and its importance at this point in history. So this is an exciting opportunity for us to document the good work that our teachers and staff have been doing for this last decade, and it's really nice given, you know, thinking about when we first started, and these ideas were germinating and coalescing into a school, it wasn't a time when there was the kind of awareness that we have now about global climate change and the challenges that we're facing. We certainly didn't have an international youth movement that was rising to demand things like education for sustainability that could support their capacity to meet those challenges head-on. So it's really exciting to be in a position, after this first decade, to be considered an accelerator school that will help other schools across the country to accelerate their efforts to catch up with the times, and start doing this work in service to their students, their communities, and to, you know, to all of us living a better life in the face of this global crisis. Woo, you think, Mike? So ultimately, the outcomes, we're gonna be working with four scholars. One of them is David Sobel from Antioch New England Graduate School, who is a well-recognized expert in place-based education, which is one of our core practices here. And so Dr. Sobel and others will be working with us as schools to not only document our stories and provide the right kind of supporting data, quantitative and qualitative, to demonstrate the efficacy of our work, but also to develop a transdisciplinary research agenda for the movement. So we'll be participating in sort of driving the research, and being able to tell the researchers what we need as a school in order to be able to continue to grow and develop our work. So it's pretty exciting, and I'm really thrilled that we've been invited to be part of that leadership team.
Tina, any more from your report?
Nope, that's it from you for now. And we have a few people that are in the circle doing some introductions.
So before you guys got here, we just went around and said hi to [inaudible]. So what you do? Hi, what's your name?
Hi, I'm Mike.
And who are you?
I'm a phys ed teacher here, and I started back in the fall. I graduated from IC in May. I do community organizing work as my other job around the Ithaca Green New Deal. And I love civic engagement and the movement for creating the education of a sustainable and climate resilient future in a place that has essentially declared a climate emergency. So I'm very passionate about the education, the acknowledgement that the education, that this education is in climate emergency mode.
Michael Miller, a student here, Gavin, and just here to support the school.
Thank you. And Tanya?
I'm Tanya. Tanya Saunders, a member of the board.
Alright. Work at full strength, is he? Alright, so we'll move on to treasurer's report.
Okay. The first thing I asked Tina to send you the other day for the packet for tonight was the second quarter, the second quarter report. Did send that, yes? And this is just a comparison of, you know, this is about the second quarter, October, November, December, compared to our original budget. And for the quarter, I would just like to note a couple things. Total revenue is $180,000 below budget, that makes sense, because our original budget was based on 150 students, and we have 111. So that completely makes sense. Total expenses for the quarter were $478,000 compared to a budget of $613,000, which also makes sense, because as you don't have the students, you don't need as much expenses, but you also have to make cutbacks in different places. So our net income for the quarter was a loss of $37,000 compared to a budgeted revenue of $2. So revenues down $171,000, the top line, I think to come down to $37,000 was yeoman's work by the team here. The administration, the staff, the faculty, all pitching in and doing good work with little resources. So thank you to the staff, the faculty, the aides, the volunteers, to everybody who makes this place run, even when it necessarily shouldn't. There's not, looking at line by line, there's really nothing of note to say this line was over because of X, or this line was way under, even though I thought I should have money in it. It's really just straight, it makes sense, it's really clean and easy. As far as the, I had expected to be able to have preliminary February numbers tonight, so that we could at least send something in on Monday, having said the board at least looked at things that were through February 21st. However, we've run into a couple issues where we know there's expenses that are missing that are significant enough that giving numbers out right now is not, it doesn't make any sense. We know there's some breakups of some revenue numbers between federal lunch money and, you know, payments, different payments and stuff that are all in one bucket and need to be broken out better to make sense. And additionally, between Carlos here and our consultant in Rochester, we're having a little bit of trouble because they're using two different QuickBooks versions. So Carlos has to send stuff to Robin, and then put in what she wants him to put in to adjust it, and then she has to review it again. So we've run into a couple glitches in the last week with things not quite going in the way they were supposed to, where Robin catching other things. So I'm not gonna present preliminary February numbers today, because I have limited faith in them. I have faith that they are being researched and gonna be fixed, but I don't have faith that they're presentable right now for public consumption.
Can I ask a question?
You may.
The QuickBooks thing, is it that they're using two different versions, or they're keeping two sets?
No, it's that they're using two different versions, because QuickBooks, the way it works, so there, every year, QuickBooks issues a new release. So we're using 15, and she's using 16, so you can't go backwards, you can go forwards. So we either have to upgrade, but unfortunately, you can't find 16 anymore. So in order to upgrade, we'd have to have both of them upgraded.
Right, they both have to go to 17?
They both have to go to 20, or 19 at the very least. Because you can't buy 17 or 18 now. You might be able to find 19 somewhere, but you can't.
And it doesn't make sense to update that, or sort of, we're gonna update everything.
So our operations department is looking at those options to present to Katie and Robin and Carlos, so that we can get everybody on the same page, and that should happen relatively quickly.
And that's the second part of the question, how do we anticipate that everybody can be in the same page?
And of course, these are limitations that you only have when there's someone working, you know. You know, we've not run into this before, because Robin came out here to finish January. So we didn't have to send five, so.
Wasn't there a plan to farm everything out for Robin?
Well, there are the, there are the things that are put into QuickBooks that are more the day-to-day transactions, that have been the basis for the financial reporting. So like when we receive invoices, for instance, they're entered as accounts payable, and when we bill districts, we are entering that we're, you know, what we're invoicing them for, and then that becomes the data that's the basis for the financial reporting.
Then that's probably, the rest of that conversation probably needs to happen in the executive session. Because it's a change of job description, some [inaudible].
Any other questions for Katie? Okay, we will move on to staff reports, first semester academic outcomes, school leadership team.
So unfortunately, the school leadership team has appointed me, because we've got one sick spouse, and kids to take care of, and another person who have a family urgent need. So what I'd have to say out to you is our first round of summarized outcomes for our Regent's Exams and our core courses for this past exams and our core courses for this past semester. So I wish there was somebody here other than me to report this out to you because we're super excited about, about our passing rates for this first semester, and I really wish that our school leadership team members were here to make the report and also receive whatever accolades that we, you know, want to give them. I mean, certainly give them big props, so.
I'm gonna have to bask in the glow of mokings.
That's right. So yeah, so as you can see, our Regents, our Regents passing rates were all really solid, and you know, some of them, you know, we've got the numbers in there, Joe, how many took the, I don't report any of these 100%, but those 100% are the ones where we only had one or two taking those exams. When you see that one or two students have taken an exam, it usually means that they're, they're either retaking an exam or they may be taking an exam for course credit without taking the course, they want to attempt it in order to earn some additional credit, something like that. So that is also actually the case for algebra. Those are not students who have taken a full algebra course that is currently culminating in a Regents exam. Those are students that are either retaking the exam or are attempting to take it in lieu of taking the course. So if a student meets all of the, meets all of the performance standards for the course and scores an 85 or higher on an exam, then they can request a review for, earn the course credit for a mastery level for, for algebra. So, so that passing rate for algebra, I just wanted to say, is not reflective of the quality of instruction of our phenomenal algebra teacher, who's, who's really rocking it out. This, this is sort of a, not the culmination of a course, but rather individuals taking the exam for different reasons. Again, looking at aggregate course passing rates, we have course passing rates of 90% or above in all areas, other than upper school social sciences, you know, social studies. So I broke that out so you can take a look at where that 70% comes from. So 65% of students passed US history and 89% passed the economics course. So economics is a required course for graduation, it's taken by seniors, and US history is generally taken by juniors and does culminate in a Regents exam. So as you can see, in terms of those taking Regents exams, we have four students who did not pass the exam with, in, in January, and they will retake that exam in June. And they, plus the students who didn't pass the US history course in the fall semester, will take the course in the spring in order to both prepare for the exam as well as to finish earning the course credit. So that is, yeah, those are, those are the outcomes and results from the first semester. One thing that I feel like, like this, this small piece of paper doesn't really fully tell the story of actually compiling this data in that, you know, as, as you know, Ramona Steele left this past fall, and so we were left without someone who was knowledgeable about School Tool and, you know, use of the spreadsheets and where they do the data compilation that we need. And so I'm really happy to report that this is the first work of Namrata Harval, who's joined us on a very part-time basis, eight hours a week, to, to do this work, and she's been actually super amazing. She asked me all kinds of questions about School Tool and, you know, how the data is stored and where it's stored and like, I mean, I, I don't even speak her language, you know? So she really has, you know, just dived in and figured out, how do you pull this information out? And, and she's just now beginning to work on then, how do we, how do we, how does she recreate the spreadsheets we've been using to, you know, compile the numbers that we need for our accountability and plan progress report? So the next iteration, you'll see these numbers translating into how does this, how does this show how we measure up against our accountability and plan, progress report goals that ultimately we report on in September.
A rate for the passing rate percentages. Next time.
We want the numbers, yeah, that's right. So we, we will certainly get those in there, and give that feedback to Ramona. Alright, any other questions about? So I'll just say, I'll also just introduce our school leadership team is comprised of teachers who head our upper and lower school teams. So Danielle Angie, who's sat in the circle, and Sue Schwartz is our, is our upper school lead teacher. David Sanders, one of three Davids, who is our special education coordinator. David Stride, who is an upper school, upper school science teacher, who serves as our professional development lead teacher. And then Jack Kinghalton, who's our graduate students. So that, those folks plus, plus me, we meet several times a month in order to look at school data, to do planning, you know, for all aspects of a school, and to engage through conversations that happen with teacher teams, engage all teachers in decision-making processes related to, you know, things that are happening in the school.
Thank you. So we will move on to Michael. And particularly for this, this part, we're going to blend some of Michael's presentation in here with, with the community conversation, since we don't have a separate topic for the community conversation tonight. So as we're, as we're watching Michael's presentation, this will also be the time to, to interject, to discuss, and to, you know, give your feelings about what, what you're seeing.
Alright, so I know enrollment is a, is a hot topic, so that's why I have the PowerPoint presentation, so I can show you some of the data. So far, things are, from my perspective, I'll just give my opinion first, I feel like things are progressing along much better than I have seen over the last three years since I've been here. I feel like there's a lot of momentum, and I think the data that I'm gonna show you will support that. So today, can everyone see the screen? I know this thing is a little high.
We can see the big words.
Okay. So, so today we've completed seven enrollment events and have 13 more scheduled, and more could be scheduled beyond that, but those are the ones that we know of so far. Enrollment events are comprised of open houses, community info sessions, community events, and school presentations. We actually have two school presentations and an open house this week, just to give an example of what's, what's happening, they're moving very, very fast.
Michael, what's a school presentation mean?
Uh, we'll be going to a school and.
Oh, in a school, okay.
Yeah, and give, similar to the presentations we're doing at the community info sessions, we'll present to both students and families about what New Words is all about. So in the enrollment process, we kind of look at, you know, various stages of, of how people work through the process. So the stages are initially, they're expressing interest in the school by reaching out to us, contacting through a family, through a community member, expressing interest, oftentimes that's coming through the website or social media. And then those people may attend an event, and they could also skip the first step and go to the event, and that's how they express their interest is by attending an open house and info session, et cetera. After that, generally, they'll come in for a tour, I'll give a tour to the family and student, answer questions for them, and then if they want, you know, they also, and I strongly encourage this, but they don't always take us up on it, but they can have a shadow experience. And a shadow experience is when they, you know, they get, the student gets to follow another student through the school and really experience the school for the day. After that, they enroll, and then after that, you know, or they can apply, and then after that, you know, be enrolled in the school. So sometimes people skip the first three and just, just to apply. They know they want to be here, they have a sibling who came here, they've heard great things about us, they have a friend who goes here, and they may skip all of those processes. So just want to map all that out, so I'm gonna show you the data, the breakdown of all the people that are in that process right now. So we have right now 36 people in the process. 31% of those people are in the interested stage. 8% of those people have attended an event, and some of the others could have attended an event, but it's just where they are in the stage right now. 11% have done a tour or a shadow, and 50% of those students are either applied or enrolled in the school currently. So I feel like, you know, I used to work in sales, and, you know, when you look at like a sales funnel, people working through it, I feel like this is, you know, very strong signs, that once people come, have awareness about our school, come and experience our school, the likelihood of them applying or enrolling in the school is very high. You know, I mean, I, I have both the privilege and the burden of hearing all this, the backstories of why people come here? Yes?
Guess what I'm gonna say?
What's that?
Where are the numbers? The percentages are, the percentages of?
Well, I told you how many students were.
Thirty, thirty-six total. So that means 18 of them are in the application phase.
Or, or enrolled in the school. They've applied, some of those have already, most of those have already started here.
Okay, so that's, that becomes my question. So we're, out of the seven events that have already happened, where is this data coming from, this 36? Is it coming out of the seven events that already happened? Or is it coming?
Just the total enrollment process, total enrollment process.
So you might have people who didn't come to an event, but they, through social media, they messaged us and said they're interested.
Like, people can go on our website right now and just apply to come to the school. They don't have to walk through the process, they can jump right into the application.
I understand that. But I guess, you know, when, and it's my confusion, when we talk about, there are seven events that have happened, and then there are these 36. To me, I put the events and the, and the 36 together, and so is that, is that where, you know, so if I'm not, in a linear way of thinking, I need, where do they start? So since January 1st, folks who have entered into some piece of this process make up this 36?
Since prior to January 1st, yes.
Well, I'm like, that's what I'm looking for. If you came to the seven events.
This, this school year, this school year.
Okay, so we're going all the way back to August, September.
This is since we, since we have started our enrollment campaign.
When? At all, when?
What's the, what's the date?
I don't have a date for you, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't remember that, I mean, it's just since we've started the, started the process.
Do you have a month?
Well, our first, our first event was in December.
Yeah, first was in December, so yeah.
I mean, generally, so generally, like, we're not, generally, chart the way that the cycle works is that charter schools begin accepting enrollment applications for the next school year in January. And generally, we see very, very little activity until actually later in the spring, as we've discussed, but so, so January is really, and I don't even know, Michael, that we had many people at all on that list until we pressed it into January in terms of.
Yeah, I mean, we had, we had some in December open house, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, so I would say, I would call it early December, because it was December 7th, right?
Okay, so since we can't sort of align the other, I needed a timeline that we're talking about. So I, I can go with early December. That works for me.
And it isn't really a linear process, you know, it, it happens many different ways. My interest in shit.
Twenty years of admissions. I know how it happens. But I, I do need some things to hang the process off, and that's what I was missing.
Part of our job is to understand and, pardon this version of it, but count the beans. And so we're spending $24,000 this year roughly on this effort, and we, it's, it's necessary for we trustees to correlate the production, if you will, of contacts with students and the production of enrollees. So we have some sense and can decide whether efforts are effective or not effective, and that's our job. So numbers are helpful, percentages frankly, aren't so much.
And where, did you receive the numbers in advance? Did they get the numbers in advance?
We did put out the, I did put out the, the numbers and the percentages as, as part of the board report.
We're holding seven events, how many came to each event? I mentioned this before. I mean, I don't understand frankly, why it's offensive to ask for specifics.
I don't, I don't, I don't think it's offensive for me to ask for specifics. I don't, I don't think so. I think, I think though, it's just not, it's just not data that Michael prepared to present tonight, but now that we've received that request, then with the next presentation, we.
I have a spreadsheet I can share with you all of, of data. This is just trying to summarize it for this, for the forum.
With the, and so like, and really I think our, well, correct me, Michael, if I'm wrong, but wanting to show like our progress in generating interest that will lead to numbers of students overall enrolled, as opposed to assessing the effectiveness of any particular one of our types of outreach at this point in time is.
I, I, that's what I, I sort of assume, but I think then that's why the, the timeline becomes important, because in being able to assess how the efforts are working versus any of the processes, and there's a way to do that as well, but versus any of the processes, then it's important to see how much effort went out and what kind of time period to net us what, you know, in the end. So that's, that's my opinion as to where about it.
Well, I'm actually super excited to, to kind of dig in with you about your admissions experience, so that you can really help us to, to tap into that, like, all of that accumulated Cornell wisdom about like, how do you, you know, and your 20 years of experience. Yeah, yeah, there you go. Alright then, we got some, we got some work to do.
So, sorry.
No, don't apologize, that's what this is all for, I wanted you all to see where we're at. And you mentioned efforts, and despite all of the good efforts that we're having from staff, students, families, there's also some other efforts going on out in the community. We attended, Charlie was there, we attended an information session in Groton. And when I arrived, the owner of the, the owner of the business approached me and said, you know, that there's something I've got to tell you about. There was a woman here, and she was disappointed in us in hosting your information session. I said, why was she disappointed? She says, oh, well, she told us that you are, you guys were in trouble, and you guys were gonna close, and that you shouldn't be, you shouldn't be hosting this, this session. And this, this person, was, she said was a female, she said she wanted to hang these flyers there in the, in the, in the cafe. So I said, okay, well, that's, that's great, and, you know, thanks for, thanks for letting me know, you know, there's people out there who may act that way. And so we looked across the street and we found a bus app that had these yellow public notices that had been previously hung around Ithaca, that we had gotten reports from a lot of different people in the community. And so someone, someone traveled potentially from Higa Heights out to, out to there to hang these public notices. There's a close-up of what the public notice is, and it's basically outlining our, outlining our probationary status. And we went around Groton and found that someone had gone and hung these public notices right next to our information session posters. So I don't know why this is, I, I don't know why this is happening, but I just want you all to know that there are people in the community that are, you know, actively working against our efforts. And, you know, again, just my opinion, I feel like, you know, if our school doesn't provide a product that people want, so be it, but to have people going out and actively trying to undermine the efforts that we're doing seems, seems kind of unethical to me. We do know who it is, but I'm just gonna leave that name out of the conversation because I don't think it's necessary to disclose that.
I think it's really important that you mentioned that I was gonna ask if you did. Obviously, people have a right to their opinion, and they probably have First Amendment rights and say how they want to characterize things, but it's worth knowing, and I think an appropriate way to go in minutes, that there is active efforts to discourage people from responding to the efforts that you're making. The whole group is.
And I want to continue to just acknowledge, and even, just to continue to acknowledge that this is a really, really disheartening move by whoever to do that to an educational institution really hurts me, and I just want to like establish a space right here of just acknowledging it, continuing to acknowledge it, and really, I, I personally really would not like that at all. I, I personally really would not like that at all, period. And I would like for it to stop, that kind of move. The students here are amazing, and this school is amazing, period.
Mike, where are the flyers signed?
They're not signed.
Okay, so you know a hundred percent who put the flyers out? A hundred percent, without a doubt. Before you put names in the record, do you know for a hundred percent? Is your word alone?
Yep.
Just want to protect you.
I know enough to know, but I, yeah. I don't have a photo of this person doing it, so...
Was it just the one community, or it sounded like there might have been more than?
Well, we, we have hired someone to hang posters for us around the community, and, uh, we're getting constant reports of these posters being taken down as well. And it's not just our enrollment posters, it's our root stock posters, it's, you know, there's an active campaign.
Shouldn't we tell the police? I think we should. Because we don't know if that's the beginning of a greater threat to our students or to anyone who works here. So, I think we should have armed police.
Yeah, I'll leave that up to the board to decide how you wanna handle it, reporting what's happening. So, I think, you know, despite that, what I would consider shameful behavior, um, I believe our success is due to the empowerment of our community. We've had amazing support from staff, we've had amazing support from students, um, we have obviously all of core support, um, families. I mean, we've had families coming to every session, so I just feel like we're having, you know, a full, a full effort going towards the numbers that we have. And while I believe the numbers are going in a positive direction, one thing we're talking about as a staff is not to get complacent, that things are going in a positive direction, but to keep the urgency and keep the fire, um, that really launched this campaign this year. That's it.
When we put our posters up, this was saying, you know, "Come to New Roots," and the posters, it's on New Roots, we're the ones who're putting it up. Uh, and this, this, this negative campaign against us, whoever is doing this, um, is not giving any ability for the public to, um, contact them or find out who they are, find out what their agenda is because they are hiding behind anonymity. And I think that that kind of adds to the issue here of taking down people's posters. I mean, obviously, you can put up any culture you want, it's free speech, but taking down people's posters is then affecting other people's free speech rights. And then hiding behind anonymity, uh, I think really, um, creates, uh, a situation where, like you say, that there's, there's some ethical concerns here.
But also, if you're taking down the New Roots, the New Stock posters, which is a student event, what is that saying about their attitude towards our students? And is that just the first step in, in negative behavior towards our students, or is it something else? I don't know, but I'm just saying that I think that we do need to lodge a complaint with the police, just in case.
But we might also wanna share in an appropriate way with the local media. I'm, I'm certainly for some kind of board action to bring the attention to the authorities to, and, um, find a, an effective way to let the media know as well.
And this actually also comes back to, you know, the expenditure of public funds for the activity of informing the wider community about this school as an alternative for a free public education in our region. And that is actually one of the things that we're obligated to do under the Charter Schools Act. We're, and we report on it, on our activities to the institute so that they can be assured that not only are we promoting generally, but that we're promoting in ways that reach students who are underserved, um, in districts throughout our region. And so, in accordance with our, um, our public charge to let, let people know about this option, um, that they're, they're free to choose, we're spending public monies, and, um, it's authorized by this board, and, uh, as, you know, with SUNY providing oversight. And so, it really is interference with, that directly impacts taxpayers and directly impacts, um, our ability to follow through on our, our compliance, um, our necessary compliance.
This certainly, in my mind, needs to be part of our ongoing reporting to CSI with regard to our efforts to add students. So, it should, that, that has to be known to them that there's an active campaign to discourage...
But that's malicious behavior. I don't care how you define it. That's malicious behavior.
And I'm gonna tell you, uh, in, in two minds. Um, one, 'cause I don't know what that yellow says, and if it's just reporting the facts, even though we may not like them, if it's, if it's what's already published, we just, we just be ready to address it when we have our group meeting. I mean, I don't, it's, it's a fact.
I'm talking about Charlie.
I, I'm finished, let me finish, 'cause that's different. Okay, so, and I think, and I think our response needs to be different, and that's why I'm, I'm separating them out. Um, and, and I, well, I think all should be reported to CSI. But, yeah, one is just, we just be prepared to talk about it at the group function. What, if they're only just reporting the facts of our probation. You know, it's a public number, whatever, um, it's not pretty, it's not nice, whatever. But the other, the taking down stuff, that thing, and I think, you know, in general, this is part of the negative campaigning against New Roots. But the, the greater weight for me is the taking down of our posters and all of that, because that does, I'm a big believer in free speech, and that, then it gives our speech. And, you know, while folks can say anything that's true they wanna say, um, they can't deny us the message that we want to say.
But people also have a right to associate freely, and if, if the notices go away that say this is an opportunity to learn, then that's taking away that liberty or freedom as well.
Well, I also just wanna like pointedly say that the posters, like, doing the act of going through the effort of posting a negative poster next to like a beautiful educational institutional poster, like, in my camp, we say that's doing the most. And I just wanna pointedly say, like, uh, freedom of speech, that is like lack of love, and that is hurtful, dividing, and hateful to do that. And just continue, continue to acknowledge that, continue to acknowledge that. Because our students are awesome and beautiful, and because the school's mission and vision is awesome and beautiful, and continue to acknowledge that.
Michael, I have a question. By my standards, for instance, you're quite tuned to social media. Are you seeing anything on the negative side on social media?
Not, not recently.
Good.
There was a time in October when it was coming hot and heavy, but that's subsided.
Okay.
How about some of the parents? Are, are you saying anything, or are your kids telling you anything?
Not lately.
That's kind of affecting their educational experience?
Speaking of parents, we have had some really awesome parent action committee meetings. We've got such a great group of active parents that have done things like, you know, think back to a couple months before the, the news in December hit, and the focus was on fundraising. And so, parents had fundraised, um, several thousand dollars in monies for student activities specifically. And, um, and also then, you know, since the time of, uh, the announcement of SUNY's really pulled together to support the school and participate in developing this outreach plan. So, I just wanna thank the parents who are, who are here, you know, come out tonight to support it's, um, it's, it's, everyone has busy lives, and it's really, it means a lot to the staff and the students, you know, what you do, what you do.
I've gone to a couple of the parent action meetings, I've seen you there. Yeah, anything you wanna tell us about, kind of what, what's going on with those groups that the board, also the board members who doesn't have, don't have a chance to go to those meetings? You can say no, I'm not...
Say is Mike should do his presentation that he's doing to the public here, and show them, and maybe get the kids to come here and do the talk. You know, I have Austin talking about robotics, you have the boys and the young lady there talking about the environment. Have them present, I think, the board would benefit from seeing that.
Oh, seeing the whole presentation, yeah. Yeah, that's a good idea.
I, I've just noticed that it's, it's good to see the parents come together and see the communication, and see how everybody's been pitching around different things, like donating snacks for school activities, or volunteering for spaghetti dinner, all that stuff. It just kind of, the meetings started happening, and people just provided action, and the momentum hasn't been off. Which is amazing, 'cause, you know, you see certain things, people show up, the first couple things, they're gonna huddle, and then things out, and things out, and things out. It's kind of like, it hasn't been out.
This year, it's strong.
Yeah, it's, it's awesome.
Thank you. All right, our final order of business for this evening. And I know that some people actually have to go, so we're gonna have our public comment period, and we're going to adjourn. So, um, um, three minutes. Chris Teseglia-Hyves.
Thank you. Uh, first, I wanted to, on Chris Teseglia-Hyves, my daughter used to attend New Roots, she graduated senior, quite successful, second year college, and master of college, quite happily doing a music education program. This was a great experience for her, New Roots was. The teachers were tremendously supportive of her in, in allowing her to, you know, succeed. I just wanted to make that statement, but, um, I also wanted to thank Kate and Joe, once again, for asking some very good probed questions and trying to get factual information. I think that's very important, and, um, thank you. I'll connect with this, but, uh, to the, the question about the yellow signs that were, um, Mike Mazza posted up here, I wanted to ask, is it unethical to disclose information to the public, factual information to public? Is it ethical to hide factual information from the public? These are rhetorical questions, I'm not expecting answers. I had another thing that came to mind. How do you know, Mike, that the same individual who hung these posters are the same ones who took down your New Roots posters? Isn't that an assumption? I'd also like to know, how do we know that a staff member at New Roots Charter School who's trying to undermine things didn't take down the New Roots Charter School posters? Seems totally opposite, but how do we know that that didn't happen? You know, I mean, might that have been a, a great way to paint a, a certain negative picture to justify involvement of police? I could, I could say, say, yeah, these signs were down, and I could report that back to the board to paint a certain picture. You're shaking your head.
I didn't mean for you to see.
So, anyways, I'm just, you know, there are a lot of assumptions that were presented here, and I wanna be, um, very careful about pointing that out, and ask you to be very careful about posing assumptions as fact. Uh, I happened to observe a yellow sign up at Tripphammer Plaza, this community board up there. And it really, it caught my attention, because it was this really bright yellow sign, kind of like what Mike showed there. It was there back in December or January sometime, um, and then sometime in the middle of January, it was missing, and so, it was like, oh, all right, whatever. It appears somebody took it down. And then later, sometime in late January, a new one reappeared. So, somebody, it hasn't, is taking an active role in trying to remove these signs that are factual information, um, to share information with the public. And if, if people are taking signs down, you know, and should, you know, maybe the person who's posting these up should, you know, report that to the police as well.
Yeah, they should.
I mean, that, that...
But I'm not responsible for that for this sign, I'm only helping.
Right, right. I, I guess your time's up. Thank you, Charlie.
Mike, I'm gonna borrow your thing here, help me stand. Five-year-old boy, I'm sorry, a young boy, five weeks remaining in school, approached by two boys. One grabs him, they push him into a room, shut the door, physically assaulted. This happened. Physical assault only lasts a few minutes, emotional scars last a lifetime. Principal, fluffing his chest, says to me, "They should have three days' suspension in school. That's the most powerful suspension I've ever issued." He's proud of that. Fast forward a year, young boy goes to a different school. His unique personality, his quirks are welcome. He learns in a classroom with smaller teacher students ratios. He enjoys learning and wants to go to school every day. School made him a member of the community. Being part of the community has taught him a lot of others. Read to the elementary students, feed people with fish and loaves, clean trash from the parks and make them enjoyable places. This is my son. Today, New Roots faces may battles. One of the most challenging is from the community group. We don't want the school to be here. They wanna shut it down. They think this is what's best without consulting parents, without consulting students. They're doing this as their own. Well, ladies and gentlemen, this is my school. This is my son, and I've had enough of these attacks. I'm not sending him back to a public school to get bullied, to be a number. You want that? Fine. The parents have had enough. I've had enough. As involved parents, I'm gonna stand and be at every meeting, and I'm gonna be here, and I'm gonna say this every time. I'm gonna get other parents here to voice their opinions. This group, this group trying to shut this school down, these anonymous attacks is BS. It's a smear tactic against my son. I've had it. I'm fed up. I'm not talking, it's my time. I didn't interrupt you, don't interrupt me.
You're, you're looking at me.
Yes, I am.
So, I'm, you're engaging.
Now, I'm gonna engage the board. It's time to say enough. My tax dollars are not being collected by this board. Get a lawyer, sue my school district, school, sue Ithaca. Get the money that's owed to you. I've written the board, I've addressed the superintendent, it's your turn. Get the money that's addressed and owed to this school. You get that money, these issues go away. This is my money as a taxpayer. It's not the school's money. They think it's theirs, it's not. It's money. I am the taxpayer. My son goes to school here, it's his money. It belongs to him, not to the school district itself. I'm tired of this, and I'm sorry I'm so emotional, but this is my son, and these smear tactics end. I will find a way to end them. This is not a threat, it's a promise. I'm gonna get every parent here at every meeting to address these concerns. I'm gonna get the parents out in the community to help. It's time, the parents start standing up, my time's up, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I applaud you for coming to the board meeting, 'cause very, very few parents come to the board meetings.
All right, so, uh, with that public comment period is done, is there any new business that we, uh, board members would like to discuss this week? Okay, with that then, I move to adjourn this meeting, where your second, your second...
Second.
Second by you. All those in favor to adjourn, raise your hand. And it is unanimous, we are adjourned, uh, at seven forty-one. Thank you, everybody.
And Charlie, there was an email going off to your business office, uh, saying that we request a response within five days, and if not, we need to get them. Just so you know.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.